Good evening, we call our meeting to order. We have the invocation by County Manager Merv Waldrop, pledge allegiance by Commissioner Kelly.
Let's pray. Lord, we want to thank you for the rain you're sending our way that we need. Thank you for the blessings we enjoy in our community, that we celebrated the liberties and freedoms that we enjoy this past week. Lord, I pray that we will not take those for granted. Ask that you give this board, grant them wisdom for all the decisions that they have to make tonight. Forgive us of our many sins, would you give us, help us to walk in justice and mercy and treat each other with fairness? We ask this in Christ's name.
Please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the adoption of the agenda. We got a couple of changes on it. So between five and six, we're gonna have Solicitor Matt Franklin speak. And we're gonna put item twenty-two at the end of the agenda.
Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Kelly, all in favor. Next is the approval of the minutes for June fifth and June tenth.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we approve the minutes for the Finance Committee, June fifth, and regular meeting on June tenth.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Lively, all in favor. Next, we'll hear from Jesse Williams with the Georgia Forest Commission on the annual report.
How y'all doing today? I really come up here to kinda introduce myself. My name's Jesse Williams, I'm the new Chief Ranger at the Burke County Unit for the Georgia Forestry. This is our annual report from July twenty-four to June thirty-twenty-five. We have at the Burke County Unit, a total of three Rangers, with two of them being active right now. We have an interview this Monday for the third vacancy we have open. We have a new forester here, as Mr. Blake Harrison. He started about the same time I had, so that's all gonna be a little bit new to us, so y'all bear with us. As equipment, we have a two-fifty with water tank, two John Deere tractors, three-fifties, and a D-six-K. We have a Ford F-five-fifty water tank engine that we use to fight fire with. We have a breakdown of the wildfires we had in our last financial year. As a total of fifty wildfires that we had respond to, with a total of four-hundred-and-ninety-two acres that has burned, with an average size of nine, nine acres to ten acres. We had two pretty good-sized fires, one being up to two-hundred-and-fifteen acres in this past February, that we suppressed with the RFD's help. Pre-procession breaks, being plowed or haired. We've done a hundred-and-thirty-two hours' worth of pre-procession, that's not including hurricane work. We haven't got them numbers in yet, but we are still going at hurricane work. Serving a total of thirty-eight customers and landowners. We have a total of prescribed burned acres for this past year was three-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-eight acres that we've helped burn with different landowners throughout the county. We have assisted with hurricane work, hurricane restoration. When hurricane come through, we had teams, on solid teams. Some of our Rangers was here in Burke County, most of them was in the region around us. We utilized all our dozers, salt team, and all this to help clear the roads with this hurricane. And now we have two programs out to help landowners clear debris and minimize the impact for wildfires. One is our program for pushing out existing fire breaks. If you was applied for these programs and got approved, you'd be getting a phone call from us. It's roads, existing fire breaks that we helped to push out, and it's paid for by a grant. There's another program for the restoration of replanting trees. That's a little bit more on Mr. Blake's side, if y'all would like to talk with him about that. We've assisted in a bunch of community outreach programs. We're trying to get our word out there of protecting our forests, wildfires, anything we can do, we would be happy to help come out with the public. We have a program that we could elect, every year we go around and collect different kinds of seedlings for different trees to replant and resell. And a total for our area that we collected, between like twenty-four gallons' worth of wild plums, swamp chestnut trees, anything like that. We collect these seeds up, send them to our nursery, and they grow them, and we replant them, and sell them back to the public on our website. And that's about all I got. Do y'all have any questions?
Appreciate what y'all do.
Thank you for your report. I appreciate that y'all, that Georgia Forestry is emphasizing native species. Back twenty years ago, it wasn't, we were just putting all kinds of stuff out there. But it looks, I like this, it's gonna be beneficial to the county, to the state.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Solicitor Matt Franklin.
Good evening. So, we've had an influx of school bus, school traffic citations, and they're not, as you may be aware, they're not criminal citations that would be charged by the state. They're actually civil citations, and that means that the county is actually the plaintiff. It changes things a little bit about how to go about it. Judge Cox has prepared a memorandum, I don't know if you guys have a copy? So, to kinda summarize what the memorandum says, is because the county is the actual plaintiff, that changes things, so far as how you go about actually when somebody's charged with a citation and they wanna come to court. If they did it in the magistrate court, based upon the memorandum, the county may not have to have a lawyer to represent them in a magistrate court. However, if they were tried in state court, the county has to be represented by somebody. The solicitor, county lawyer, but there has to be some kind of a lawyer to represent the county if it's in state court. The memorandum goes on to say that if we did it in state court, we would be one or two of a hundred-and-forty-nine counties that do it in state court. Most of these citations are challenged in lower courts, municipal courts, magistrate courts. At the end of the memorandum, Judge Cox makes three recommendations. One would be for the Solicitor General's office and state court to just go ahead and try the cases in state court. The second option is, the county would have to obtain private counsel to file the actions in state court. That means the county would be responsible for hiring outside representation. And then finally, he gives the option of filing the matter in possibly magistrate court. Now, there is some law that says that the solicitor is responsible for these types of citations. So, I would recommend that we just go ahead and do it in state court and try them through the solicitor's office. I think that's the easiest thing to do, although for some reason, no other counties want to do that. But if we tried them in magistrate court, that would require a whole separate calendar for the solicitor's office, aside from the regular state court citations. So, I just wanted to make the county aware, that was the situation that we're in. And, you know, my recommendation would be for the solicitor's office to just try the cases in state court.
So, as it reads right now, even though we didn't have nothing to do with the school bus cameras, we didn't have nothing to do with the other cameras, we're responsible for a lawyer? Is that what you're saying, as it reads right now?
Yes. If it's tried, well, if it's tried in state court.
Right.
Now, in magistrate court, possibly not, but I still think the law, it, I think the law is more of the, it requires the solicitor's office to try the case, whether it's in magistrate court or state court. But, so, yes, the county has to be represented, but the law also says that the solicitor is probably the one that should do it.
Does the appellant have the choice of which court to choose to appeal? If they've got a citation, can they appeal it in magistrate court if they wanna go to magistrate court? Or can they, do they have to use state court?
I think they could appeal it from whatever court that they're in, that makes the law entitled them to.
And the reason I ask that is the filing fee to appeal in state court is about two-hundred dollars. So, to file an appeal of a hundred-dollar citation, you're gonna have to pay two-hundred dollars to get it heard, to get the hundred dollars dismissed.
But if it's not appealed, the Board of Education gets the money? And the truest, or whoever the other one is, they end up facilitating the money?
On the school bus cameras is a thousand-dollar fine.
Either way, though, we had nothing to do with it, but the Board of Education ends up with the money.
Are we talking about school cameras?
Both of them are very similar statute. There's a school bus camera, and there's the school zone camera. School zone camera is a hundred-dollar citation, school bus camera is a thousand-dollar citation. Both of them, other than the difference in the fee, then the process is almost identical in the law.
But this body has nothing to do with a thousand-dollar fine if it's paid?
If, the same thing, the thousand-dollar fine, if you ever get it, would go to law enforcement, law enforcement or public safety initiatives, just like the school zone cameras. And we come to the county, though.
Have we seen any of that?
We've seen nothing, and we don't have a contract, we don't have, what I've inquired of the school board, they told me that we wouldn't see any money until all the cameras were paid for, and that would be a long time down the road, which I don't know what, a long time down the road, nor have I seen a contract. And it was, somebody wanted to appeal, asked us about it, and I did not even know there were citations on the school buses. And then I found out that we're gonna have to be responsible for the funds whenever they come in, we're gonna have to treat it like the school zone cameras. Again, the Board Commissioner was not asked about any of it.
Well, that's why I was confused.
And it would've been good to establish a process at the beginning and not a year down the road, and that's not the solicitor's fault, but, you know, nobody asked.
And you did say that only two counties in the state of Georgia, out of a hundred-and-forty-nine counties, use the state court, did you say that?
That's what the memorandum says.
Well, there's only like fifty counties that have state court, right?
Yeah, a lot of them don't have a state court, either they handle it through.
There's a, you know, about a third of the state have state court. Rest of them, traffic goes through probate, and some go through Superior.
Yeah, so, different types of courts, but if they go through Superior Court or State Court, the county has to be represented by a lawyer. Now, if they went through municipal court, it's possible that you can do it without a lawyer. But I think the law, as far as school bus citations, I think the law says the Solicitor General has to do it, whether it's in magistrate court or state court. So that, you know, I just, I propose that, you know, the Solicitor's Office do it through state court. We can add it on to our regular calendar, and I don't think there have to be a whole lot of changes that are made, so.
Any other questions?
Is there something we have to take action on here?
The Board doesn't have to take action, I think it was the Solicitors letting you know that there's an issue, there's confusion in the law. It was, you know, General Assembly needs to correct this problem, but they tried last year, it failed. Hopefully, they'll take action come January.
Yeah, and there and again, in addition to what Merv said, the county is the plaintiff, and that's why I wanted to make the county aware of what was going on, so.
Who views the offense and issues the citation?
Alright, so, everything that I know of is done on video, whether it's through the school bus or the school zones. And when the video, when the monitor picks up a violation, they send it to the Burke County Sheriff's Office, the Burke County Sheriff's Office reviews it, and then they have an independent contractor who helps facilitate with sending out the citations and the notices to come to court. If they, if somebody gets sent a citation, they have the option to go ahead and send the money in, and then they have directions that they wanna challenge it. If they wanna challenge it, then the Sheriff's Office will go back and look and see if it's something that can be brought to court, and if it is, they'll schedule a date and time for them to come to court. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next on the agenda is bid award for four cardiac monitors and defibrillators.
Chief, are you coming down, you got a recommendation? We, you know, as introduction, we opened bids last week. We had three bids, one was for lease monitors, and two were for purchases, purchases of the four cardiac monitors. I think Seaac Enterprises was the low bid at two-hundred-nine-eight-four-six.
Actually, I called the guy from Ididium. That ninety-five-thousand-dollar bid is for buying them outright, and that's for buying four of them. So, I called him and asked him to make sure that these were new units and not refurbished. He assured me they're new units, that they come with all the same cabling, cases, everything that any other new monitor would come by. And he also said he will accept the PO with payment after we receive them. So, my recommendation is go with low bid, that's an absolute no-brainer. And I hope it's what we, I hope it turns out to be what I hope it actually is, that it's new monitors.
Would that be great, that would save roughly a hundred-and-thirteen-thousand dollars.
That's right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, per Chief's recommendation, we accept the Ididium bid of ninety-four thousand dollars.
I second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Brazel, all in favor? Next is the bid award for architectural services.
Last week, we opened bids or proposals for architectural services for a grant for the park in Goff. We had three companies submitted proposals, DPR Architecture, Johnson, Lashburn Associates, and Studio R and B. The one that we're most familiar with was DPR, they've done some work for us at that park. The other two are good firms, DPR also has a better rate as well. And that would be my recommendation to continue with using DPR.
Chairman, I make a motion that we award a bid to DPR, they are Swainsboro local also.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Kelly, all in favor? Next is the rezone of parcel zero-eight-three-dash-zero-zero-one from A-one to R-one.
I'll let Scott explain these, these are, really the two are worked hand-in-hand together. There's two neighbors that are swapping property, and in order to change the property and get it in the same zone, and they need the zoning change.
That's exactly it, Merv, the Planning Commission held a public hearing for both of these properties last month, on the twenty-fourth. Essentially, it's two properties off of Bluebird Lane. One's a large tract that has no access off of Bluebird. The other is a small tract that's willing to give a portion of their property to the larger tract. The oh-eight-three-oh-oh-one is wanting to transfer one-point-nine acres from an A-one tract to R-one so it can combine with the oh-eight-three-oh-one-oh-E, which is the smaller tract. The exact opposite is happening from the smaller tract, so they're giving fifteen-hundreds of an acre to the larger tract, just so they can have access off of Bluebird Lane. There was no opposition to it, and the Planning Commission is recommending approval.
If there's no discussion, I'll make a motion for rezoning of parcel zero-eight-three, I'm gonna, yeah, I would like to combine the two for sure. Rezone parcel zero-eight-three-dash-zero-zero-one from A-one to R-one, and rezone zero-eight-three-zero-one-zero-P from R-one to A-one.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Lively, second by Commissioner Brazel, all in favor?
And they will combine and have new surveys done?
Next is the approval of a Class B beer and wine unbroken package for takeout and consumption off the premises for Gruppi Walla. Wallia at five-forty-one Georgia Highway twenty-three South, Waynesboro, Georgia.
Is that the location known as A and A? It is selling Gruppi Wallia, he's got a couple of other convenience stores, one on River Road, I'm aware of, and is asking to get the alcohol license, Class B license, which is for consumption off premises for that location at A and A. It's had an alcohol license there for many years. We've advertised it, there's been no opposition.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the Class B beer and wine unbroken package takeout consumption license for Gruppi Wallia.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Kelly, all in favor? All opposed? Next is the second reading of ordinance twenty-five-dash-oh-one, establishing road closure procedures.
Commissioners, this will be our final reading for the ordinance that would establish a procedure and policy for requests to close county roads. Requires, and the basics are, there's an application form, a two-hundred-dollar fee to cover the mailing costs and advertising costs, plus signatures to be required of the adjacent property owners. And a requirement that you can't refile within two years, so that you don't belabor the board.
And this is something we got from another county, so we're not breaking new ground with it.
We, I think we got this one from Putnam County, I believe. I looked at several counties and kinda merged them together.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion, we approve the final reading of ordinance twenty-five-dash-zero-one.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, second by Commissioner Lively, all in favor?
Thank you, I think it may have come from Bullock now, or the combination of the two.
Next is approval to advertise and fill vacancies for maintenance position.
We've got a vacant maintenance coordinator position at facility maintenance. Money is in the budget, Josh is asking permission to advertise and fill that position.
I move that we approve to advertise and fill vacancy for the maintenance. I move that we approve to advertise and fill vacancy for the maintenance position.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Lively. All in favor? Next is approval to advertise and fill dispatcher positions for E nine one one.
We have a, a resignation at nine one one. Uh, Director Silas is asking permission to advertise and fill that, that vacant position. Funds are available in the budget.
Um, I make a motion that we approve advertise and field dispatcher position in E nine one one.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Commissioner Lively, seconded by Commissioner Nix. All in favor? Next is approval to advertise and fill athletic coordinator position.
We've got a vacant position at the Recreation Department. Um, Director Waskey is asking for permission to advertise and fill the athletic coordinator position. Funds are available in the budget.
I move that we approve to advertise and fill the athletic coordinator position.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Lively. All in favor?
And one more. We've got a, um, Commissioner, we got a request to fill a vacant clerk, um, dispatcher position at, um, Burke Transit. We had an employee that has moved on. Christine is asking for permission to fill that, that vacancy. There is, you know, funds are available in the budget.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the Burke Transit to fill the vacant clerk position.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Brazel, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor? Next is acceptance of FY twenty twenty-six Accountability Court Grant.
The, um, State Court Accountability Court Program has obtained a grant from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. This is an annual grant, um, and it's to, to help, uh, fund the operations of the Accountability Courts in the county. It's gonna be a grant for a hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred forty dollars. Just need the board's approval to accept the grant.
I make a motion that we approve the grant for twenty twenty-six Accountability Court.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Lively, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor? Next is approval of senior nutrition contract.
Um, once again, we have a contract with, uh, federal and state funds coming to the county in the amount of one hundred and fifty-six thousand, about one hundred fifty-seven thousand, some change, for the year to operate, um, the nutrition program at the Senior Center. There is a match required of twelve thousand four hundred dollars, which we have budgeted.
I move that we approve the senior nutrition contract.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Kelly, seconded by Commissioner Lively. All in favor? Next is approval of an MOA with GDOT for local bridge replacement project.
So, uh, the state of Georgia, the Department of Transportation is generously providing funding and they're gonna do the, the, um, bid out the program to replace both bridges at Thompson Bridge, uh, on Thompson Bridge at Briar Creek. Um, the only thing it would cost Burke County is fifty thousand dollars and they'll replace both bridges. Our participation is small compared to the full cost of the project. We just need the board's approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the, uh, memorandum agreement between Georgia Department of Transportation and Burke County for the replacement of Thompson Bridges, Thompson Bridge, Road Bridges.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Nix, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor? Next is approval of no sanctuary policy with GDOT.
As part of the, one of the conditions of the grant is that we declare that we are not a sanctuary county and that we comply with immigration reports and, uh, with the state of Georgia, which we do every year. Uh, we, and we are not a sanctuary county. We just need to certify and we need the board's approval.
I make a motion, uh, I make a motion to approve the no sanctuary policy with the GDOT.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Brazel, seconded by Commissioner Lively. All in favor? Next is a budget amendment for small grants.
Michael, come on up. Two grants on this budget amendment.
Yes, um, Commissioners, we have, uh, a little bit of cleanup work here on the Small Grants Fund, um, before the fiscal year end. Have two grants, um, to deal with. One was the Georgia Trauma Commission. I estimated probably this time last year that we were gonna receive twelve thousand in the Georgia, from the Georgia Trauma Commission. We received twenty-one thousand three hundred and sixty. We did, uh, order the Lucas device. It is certainly larger than twelve thousand, the cost, but it meant that we didn't have to, uh, you know, match as much this year to, to be able to get one of those devices. So, that being said, I need, I, I would like to, uh, request a motion to increase the revenue for the grant. We have received the money and increased the costs.
And so that's twenty-one, to twenty-one thousand, that's for equipment for EMA.
That's right.
And what was the second one? You could probably handle both those in one.
Okay, and the second one is?
Hazard mitigation grant.
Right, um, we, this board approved last year when we received that grant to, uh, to have the Regional Commission update the plan. That didn't occur last year. We're waiting to receive that plan and, uh, Merv may be able to give an update on that. But at some point, we'll get a, an invoice from the Regional Commission and then we'll turn right around and ask for the funding from the feds to, to pay that invoice. But I need that money in this year's budget to be able to pay that invoice.
And we anticipate that project being through in August or September.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. We amend the budget for the small grants.
I second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Lively, seconded by Commissioner Brazel. All in favor? Next is budget amendment indirect cost allegations for June twenty twenty-five.
So we have just one this month, um, the Vehicle Maintenance Fund. It's for a hundred and eight thousand five hundred dollars. I'm not requesting one for facilities maintenance. There was some fund balance remaining in that fund. Um, and we received approval, or preliminary approval from the Finance Committee. To next year, instead of having these as internal service funds, to go ahead and put these just as departments in the general fund to provide some, uh, relief from our, our complexity of our accounting system. Um, so this, it was, there's a little bit of a give and take there between, uh, losing some information, uh, or the value of some information versus how much time it's taking to, to gather that data. So, we believe that this will be the best pathway for next year. Now, that'll be during the budget process. We're not changing it this year, but we do have some fund balance in these funds, so I want to exhaust those either way before year end. And if you change, if you change that pathway and we decide that we want to stick where we are, then that's, that's up to this board. But our recommendation is going to be to have these as just departments in the general fund, just like Road Department or Recreation. But, so on this, all I really need is vehicle maintenance approved for this month.
I make a motion that we, uh, approve the budget amendment indirect cost allocations for June twenty twenty-five.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Commissioner Brazel, seconded by Commissioner Nix. All in favor? Ms. Murphy.
Thank you.
Next will be information and reports. Got a sign-up sheet, Michael. First on the list is Ms. Tracy Hollingsworth. If y'all would, limit to five minutes, please.
Citizens being arrested and jailed for acts of free speech is something most of us think of when we read works of fiction or watch movies. We think those things would never happen to us or would occur here in Burke County, Georgia, let alone our state. Yet I stand before you as a person who not only had an active warrant for my arrest from Sheriff Alfonso Williams, but also still has an active BOLO poster with my face on it. If the last few weeks have proved nothing, they have proved Alfonso will go to any length to try and silence, silence detractors. He is illegally trying to stop the recall I am spearheading. It is a sad day for democracy when the top law enforcement official in a community would lead an illegal effort to intimidate, arrest, and to fame a private citizen. We elect officials not necessarily to protect us, but to ensure our voices are heard and matter. The amount of outcry to state officials about what has been occurring here in Burke County has appeared to fall on deaf ears. If anything, it has empowered the sheriff to continue his campaign of illegal act, activity. While Governor Brad Kemp, Attorney General Chris Carr enjoy our Burke County taxpayer money, they refuse to even acknowledge the issues which have been perpetrated by the sheriff for years. This is grossly negligent on their parts and have caused good, law-abiding citizens to be persecuted and made to look like Public Enemy Number One. The other glaring issue at hand is the amount of money the sheriff has wasted, allegedly stolen and mismanaged. All our tax rates have increased exponentially because of him, whether it is frivolous lawsuits brought by attorneys who further injure the county, or the many trips on the taxpayers' dime while teaching for a private company. The result is still the same. The taxpayers lose. We're not getting the services and requirements for the amount of money we are paying. Let us not forget that there are two separate GBI investigations currently ongoing. We also have many lawsuits outstanding now, which are the Brenda Johnson sexual harassment suit, Mitchell Lambert, who spent almost a year in jail with no probable cause, the family of the man who was tased to death, and the illegal firing of Tanner Bowman. There have been the many issues such as the more than fifty-three thousand dollars that went missing, the four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of grant money spent on trips and dinners, which should have been spent on the deputies in the department. Finally, how many times are we going to continue to pay for lawsuits against our citizens through his writ of mandamuses? He continues to file because he refuses to stay within his budget. I'm here to show everyone you do not have to be afraid of the sheriff. What is done in the dark will always come to light. Our community deserves better. This recall is necessary to ensure no other person or family fear any type of retaliation from the sheriff. Anyone who would like to sign as a sponsor for the recall can meet me after the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hollingsworth. Next is Mr. Don Lively.
I expect that same applause when I get through with this. Good evening, y'all, and thank you for your, forgive me a few minutes of your time. My name is Don Lively and the Downtown Development Director for the City of Waynesboro. This past Thursday on July the third, I sponsored the annual fireworks show that we call Matt Anthony's Big Boom for the thirteenth year in a row. Since two thousand and thirteen, the Waynesboro DDA has brought the show to town and the show has always taken place at the Wayne, uh, the Burke County Recreation Department. In two thousand and thirteen, I was approached by members of the former JC chapter that was no longer in operation. They asked me if I would be interested in taking on the show and after consulting with my boss at the time, Jerry Colson, I agreed. Prior to that year, there hadn't been a show in Waynesboro for several years, for at least two or three years. I took over the show knowing that there wouldn't be no funds coming from the city or the county and that I would have to raise the funds through private donations. And every year since then, I've been able to meet the goal, uh, but some years, including this year, it was very close. And I normally start the fundraising in, uh, February or March. Over the past few years, the Recreation Department has increased, the Burke County Recreation Department has increased their involvement in the show, including taking over control of the vendors and food trucks and providing games and concession, which has been, it's just been a great event every year since they started doing that. In short, though, the Recreation Department profits from the event that wouldn't happen without months of fundraising that we, that, that I do, frankly. The show has always been one of the biggest events of the year in the county with literally thousands of folks coming into town to watch. And this year, every parking space at the rec was full and all the surrounding parking lots were also full. It's much more of a county event than it is a city event. Two years ago, I was approached by officials from the Bar, Rec Department about them wanting to take over the show and I agreed. Uh, at the time, I thought that was going to happen, but due to several factors beyond anybody's control, really, uh, uh, beyond the Rec Department's control, it didn't happen. And last year, I went so far as to announce on social media and in the true citizen, uh, that I would no, no longer be doing the show and that somebody needed, some other group, uh, needed to step up and take over the sponsorship. So I proceeded, assuming I was not going to be doing the show anymore. Um, by March of this year, nobody had and my boss is fearing that we wouldn't have a show if I didn't do it, asked me to do it. So I got a late start, but I was able to get the funds barely and we just had a great show last Thursday. Recently, my Downtown Development Authority Board of Directors has asked me to concentrate more on downtown events uh, than, uh, they, like the fireworks show, unlike the fireworks show, and make up my fundraising efforts reflect more on the downtown. So since the Rec Department has taken over the vendors and other aspects and because they profit from the day every year, I'm here to ask that the county formally take over the fireworks sponsorship. And if the rec, uh, if the rec can't budget it and needs to raise the funds through donations, I'll be happy to provide my donor lists and to assist in any way that I can. But as I stated, my DDA board really wants me to direct my efforts to the downtown, um, and this is the first start. The most recent fireworks just incidentally cost twelve thousand eight hundred and five dollars and eighty cents. And again, I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Lively. You got something?
Uh, we'd like to thank Mr. Lively for this, the show I've attended, I know, the last five years and the show has always been excellent. So he's done a great job and put forth all this hard work and effort. It's not easy raising money. It is not easy asking people for money because they think you should already have money from city, county, downtown, from everywhere. But it is a task and we do thank you for all of your efforts to make Burke County look good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. James Cobal.
Good evening. Uh, I'm James Cobal and I, um, I have a message tonight for, uh, the Commissioners and for all the Burke County citizens. I've been studying in the book of songs and I, I wanted to read this, uh, song here that's, uh, I learned as a, a little boy, but, uh, it means a lot to me. It's written by, uh, a Psalm of David and it's the twenty-third Psalm and it states, "The Lord is my shepherd. I shall not want. He maketh me lie down in green pastures. He leadeth me beside still waters. He restores my soul. He leads me in paths of righteousness for his name's sake. Even though I walk through the valleys of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for you are with me. Your rod and your staff, they comfort me. You prepare a table before, before me in the presence of my enemies. You anoint my head with oil. My cup overflows. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life and I shall dwell in the house of the Lord." So here in this, uh, Psalm here, uh, David's writing about that the Lord is a shepherd and, uh, and, and that he provides for him as, as being a shepherd. We think about a shepherd protecting his sheep. And so, uh, and so I, I thought about that, uh, being the sheep. I, I, I flipped over to, uh, Luke fifteen and it's the parable of the lost sheep. So, uh, it says, um, "Now that the tax collectors and sinners were all drawing near to him and the Pharisees and the scribes grumbled, saying, 'This man receives sinners and eats with them.'" So he told them this parable. So Jesus told in this parables, which was a story relating to, uh, lost sheep. He says, "What man of you having a hundred sheep, if he has lost one of them, does not leave the ninety-nine in the open country and go after the one that is lost until he finds it? And when he has found it, he lays it on his shoulders rejoicing. And when he comes home, he calls together his friends and his neighbors, saying to them, 'Rejoice with me, for I have found my lost sheep.'" And that was- And that was lost. Just so I tell you, there will be more joy in heaven over one sinner who repents than the ninety-nine righteous who need no repentance. So in this illustration, the shepherd went and found the lost sheep. And so, you know, I just think this is beautiful imagery here of the shepherd and the sheep, and that God's... The people have accepted Jesus. They're the sheep. And so if one of us strays, that the Lord will come and find us. And so then, in closing, here in Matthew twenty-five, verse thirteen, it says, "When the Son of Man comes in his glory..." So when Jesus comes in his glory, "all the angels with him, then he will sit on the throne, on the glorious throne. Before him will be gathered all the nations, and he will separate people one from another, as a shepherd separates sheep from goats." So here in this, we have sheep and we have goats. And so... And he will place the sheep on the right hand, but on the goat... But he'll put the goats on his left hand. Then the king will say to those on his right hand, "Come, you who are blessed... Come, you who are blessed by my Father; inherit the kingdom prepared for you, for the foundation of the world. For I was hungry, and you gave me food; I was thirsty, and you gave me drink; I was a stranger, and you welcomed me; I was naked, and you clothed me; I was sick, and you visited me; I was in prison, and you came to me." Then the righteous will answer him, saying, "Lord, when did we see you hungry and feed you, or thirsty and give you drink? And when did you see a stranger and welcome you, or naked and clothed you? And when he did... And when did we see you sick or in prison and visit you?" And the king will answer them, "Truly I say to you, as you did it to one of the least of these brothers, you did it to me." Then I will say to those on his left... And this is the important part. These... Remember, the goats are on the left. And he says... He'll say, "Depart from me, you cursed, into eternal fire, prepared for the devil and his angels." And he says... He goes on and says, "For I was hungry, and you gave me no food; I was thirsty, and you gave me no drink; I was a stranger, and you did not welcome me; naked, and you did not clothe me; sick and in prison, and you did not visit me." Then they also will answer, saying, "Lord, when did we see you hungry or thirsty, or stranger, or naked, or sick, or in a prison, and did not minister to you? Then he will answer them, saying, "Truly I say to you, as you did not do it to one of the least of these, you did not do it to me. And these will go away into eternal punishment, but the righteous into eternal life." So it's saying here that Jesus calls his sheep to him. He goes and he finds his sheep that are lost, and that they will spend eternity in heaven with him. Thank you very much for listening to me tonight.
Thank you, Ms. James.
And I got one other thing. And so I want everybody to think, you know, are we like those sheep or are we like those goats?
Next, Mr. Nathan Ford. Five minutes, please.
Hey, good evening. I also want to talk about the recall effort for Sheriff Alfonso Williams. Alfonso Williams has become the most divisive politician in Burke County in my lifetime here, and I worry about how this effort's gonna go with the recall because I know he's not gonna go quietly. He's already, before this started, sued the county over the budget. He's already filing incident reports against the commissioners. He's already seeking warrants against people who oppose him. It's a pattern of behavior whenever he doesn't get his way in this county. These are all abuses of power, and these are all reasons he can't stay in power. This should not be our fight. Tracy hit it on the head with state leadership. Shame on our state leadership for leaving us in this position when they are fully aware of case after case of unethical, questionable, potentially illegal behavior by the sheriff. There has to be more accountability. There has to be more accountability at the state level. There has to be more accountability over the sheriffs. And since we don't seem to have accountability at any level of state leadership, we are left to take this back to the ballot box, and it's gonna be a whole lot harder this time to get there. Standing up to the sheriff is intimidating. It's intimidating because he's got a gun, he's got a badge, he directs who gets arrested, he directs how they're charged, and we've seen him direct who isn't charged. It's intimidating because he has supporters, some of who might be our friends and family in this little community that we all share. They'll disagree with us. It's intimidating because we have jobs, businesses, livelihoods that we don't want to risk by becoming a public target and speaking out. But the fact that we feel intimidated is another reason to stand up and remove him and remove this culture of bullying and intimidation from office. You should not feel intimidated to speak out about your elected officials or participate in the political process in this country. The people are supposed to be the source of power. The people are supposed to be the source of power in our politics, and the people must ensure accountability for those we entrust with that power. Alfonso Williams has repeatedly abused that power. He has repeatedly violated that trust. If you still don't understand... This is to my fellow citizens. If you still don't understand how he has violated the public trust and why he should be removed, please feel free to talk to me. I welcome civil debate on this, and I urge everyone to be civil to each other as we move forward. It is a divisive subject, and he's a divisive person. This is about the actions and behavior of Alfonso Williams, and it's about nothing else. It's about his behavior and his actions. This is not... This is not about politics. This is not about race or other grievances. It is about his abuses of power. It is about his unethical behavior and his mismanagement of our public funds. The next few weeks and months may be difficult, but they will be necessary. We need citizen participation to complete the application for the recall, to collect signatures for the petition for the recall, and to get the recall election approved. All this before we can actually go vote. You can assist publicly or privately, but please don't sit back and wait for someone else to take action because doing nothing will guarantee three and a half more years of budget fights, of lawsuits, of civil rights abuses, of general embarrassment for our county. Nothing this sheriff has done at this point is good for our tax dollars, our tax base, or really our citizens. Enough is enough. Now is the time for us to take action, recall Alfonso Williams. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Next, Ms. Sabre.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Ford. I apologize, I did not plan on speaking tonight, but after today, I've had enough. There has been a man on social media who has continually called me out, specifically targeting my business and how I've done business. It stems back from the debacle last year with the Army IRT and the spain-uter funding that came in through the Army. This gentleman operates... I say gentleman very loosely, under a fake profile. He will not come forth with who he says he is, but what I can tell you is that everything he says and the people that he targets is only coming from someone with top knowledge at the sheriff's department. So you have deputies or whomever at the sheriff's department who have a lot of time to be apparently on social media, and I've had enough. I've had enough of the bullying. This person just today threatened to sue me, to take my business. I am still the owner and will continue to be the owner of Burke County Animal Hospital. And if anyone here or who is watching tonight would like to come and sign the recall petition against Alfonso Williams, they are more than welcome to come down to the animal hospital. We are open from eight to five-thirty, Monday through Friday. That's my first point. My second point, though, is just a little bit of education for tonight. This comes from Healthline. It's symptoms of psychopathy. It should sound very familiar to you, and I'm gonna read the bullet points from there. The criteria to diagnose is antisocial personality disorder. One, behavior that often conflicts with social norms, particularly with not following laws and regulations. Two, disregarding or violating the rights and feelings of others. Three, difficulty feeling remorse or empathy or justifying actions that have hurt others. Four, tendency to lie, manipulate, deceive others, often for personal enjoyment or gain. General disregard for the safety and self and others. Avoidance of responsibility, including work and financial commitments. An aggressive and violent behavior and constant irritability. I think that everyone probably knows someone that fits this profile, but I do feel like we need to know what we're working with in Burke County.
Thank you, Dr. Ford. Got any department heads? I don't see no department.
Steve and Michael are here.
Come on, I know you got something to say.
Oh, it's been a very active summer for the Recreation Department. Like Mr. Lively said, we had our fireworks show Thursday, a very successful event for us. Monday, several of us leave to go to Louisiana for our first-ever softball state champion team going to the World Series. And then other activities we have going on in July. July is National Parks and Recreation Month. This is the fortieth anniversary of them celebrating it. And July twenty-second, we're doing a family fun event out at the park, Jonathan Broxton Park. And then also the thirty-first, we'll do a back-to-school bash coincide with Burke County's open house with the school system, and we'll be giving out roughly about a thousand backpacks, thanks to a benefactor. Those are activities we got going on, and plus, fall registration now is going on. If you sign up in July, five dollars off.
Thanks, Steve.
As to the finance department, we have finished our budget recommendation based upon preliminary information gathered from the board. So we have two budget work sessions that we have scheduled thus far. One's on the twenty-fourth, the other's on the twenty-ninth at five. I'll begin the session on the twenty-fourth with a budget overview. We've posted that presentation on our website, and I believe we put it on our Facebook page... A link on our Facebook page as well, as well as the detail. I've spoken to most of the department heads or elected officials already, so I think by tomorrow or Thursday, we'll probably post the budget work session agenda. So we should be moving forward very soon on that process.
Thank you, Michael.
Well, what are we gonna discuss? It's gotta be in the motion.
We got several legal matters. I got twelve. We won't discuss all twelve, but there's a lot of legal issues all related to one department.
I miss chairman, I make a motion, we go in executive session, have to discuss four legal matters.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, seconded by Commissioner Brazel. All in favor? We come back out of executive session, we will take item, the last item, which was item twenty-two that we moved to the bottom.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to adjourn executive session. In that session, we discuss four legal matters. No official action can be taken, or no action can be taken.
I second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Nick, seconded by Commissioner Brattle. All in favor? Unanimous. Last on the agenda is obtaining legal counsel to represent the county in the case of Johnson versus Alfonso Williams.
While I make a motion that, um, we attain Mr. Russell Brind as legal counsel to represent, uh, the sheriff against Brenda Johnson.
I second.
Motion made by Commissioner Lively, seconded by Commissioner Kelly. All in favor? Unanimous. Merve. I think that's it. Meeting adjourned.